All right, I'd like to call the Monday, June 19th, Meeting of the Board of Selectmen to Order. This meeting is being recorded for cablecast and YouTube presentation by Area 58 Community Access Media. The video of this meeting is not to be considered an official public record. Our first appointment is Rich Bowen, who is here to talk to us about the possibility of being co-counsel, formerly from Copeland Page. Can we just take a quick vote? And you can head up if you'd like, Rich, to the podium. All right, so we have got Francis Profetio here. We met earlier this year, maybe a couple of months ago did we talk? Or was it not that long ago?
Couple of weeks ago.
Was it a couple of weeks ago?
Yeah.
All right, and you've got your project that we discussed, which sounds like a really good project. You just needed us to sign off on this. So we will approve your application for use of town property, providing that everyone else signs off on it as well. So you just don't have their signatures yet? We're going to be the first one?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, all right.
And that will be left in our office?
Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion. We sign for seconds.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
And the benefit area, it's just the, I don't know, the Boy Scout version of that.
Okay.
This is exactly the same as this.
So we just have to sign right there? Perfect.
Oh, you already have that?
Yep.
Okay, so there's that.
I think you're right there.
Peel that little guy off.
You can leave that one here, because what I do is send out so I'm sure it gets done.
Great.
And all of the people.
Do you need a signature or just Christine?
She did, just Christine.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, good luck.
All right.
Thank you again.
Excuse me, Frankie, can you do?
Thanks for this card, John.
Frankie, Mr. Profetio.
Oh, yes.
Please, can you take that document to Tyler's office?
I'm sure.
To, um, the clerk's office, and just have a photocopy of the whole thing? Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, now, we'd like to turn things over to Rich. Welcome.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Chairman, members of the board. It's a great honor to be with you again. The last time I stood in this spot, it was a gymnasium. And I had just carried in about 50 or 60 volumes of mass reporters that I had had in my own law library. And I remember stacking them up along the shelf in here. I don't know where they are now, but hopefully they're being put to good use. And you've done a great job with this room. It's really super. Well, it's a real honor to be joining you tonight. I've always loved Plumpton. I've driven by the townhouse with a sense of wistfulness for the last several years, and it's nice to be back inside. And thank you for the invitation to come and visit with you. I can tell you about my background, I can tell you where I've been, I can tell you what I've been doing. Well, why don't I tell you a little bit about what I've been doing the last few years? As you know, I had been a senior partner with Copeland Page, which is a really fine firm. I'm sure that they've been doing a wonderful job for you. I left to start my own law firm, to follow what I call a different way of practicing law. My approach to practicing law is akin to that of preventative medicine. What I try to do these days is to sit with officials, come to board meetings, come to the townhouse, come to town halls, and sit with people and try to figure out where you're going, what problems are going to crop up, and try to help you get where you're going, but in a way that doesn't result in what lawyers will often call a new product launch. And what do I mean by a new product launch? I mean a lawsuit, where your name is on the wrong side of the V. It's just a, for me personally, it's a more satisfying way of practicing law, to get involved at the point where I'm involved in steering things, not becoming a policymaker or a selectman. I've been a selectman, I don't want to do it again. I much prefer my role as moderator these days. But just to interact more and try to avoid the headaches that invariably pop up. You know, I've been involved in municipal government now for, well, let's see, I was first elected as a selectman in 1983 and got out of that in 1989. I was a law clerk at Copeland Page for a couple of years. I've been a municipal lawyer for almost 30 years, believe 30 years next year. I've tried just about every kind of case you can imagine, in just about every forum you can imagine. I've been a moderator since 2004, in a series of one-year terms. I like to feel that I have the experience at all different levels to be able to help you, and to do it in a way that isn't necessarily aimed at maximizing the number of billable hours. Of course, I'm not saying that that's the case with your current counsel, I'm sure it's not, but to worry less about the billable hours, and maybe worry less about, you know, maximizing legal profit, and worry more about getting to where you want to go. So that's what I do now. I'm town council of the town of Wareham, I'm town council of the town of Douglas, I'm counsel to Tingsborough Water District, I'm special counsel to a number of communities. That's the way I practice law now. It's not susceptible to having a million towns as clients, because frankly, you know, if I had a whole bunch of towns as clients, I couldn't do what I want to do. The more clients you have, the less time you can spend with any given client. And the way I want to practice law these days, the way I do practice law these days, it doesn't work having five towns, 10 towns, 20 towns, or more towns. It's just, you can't do it. It's an interactive person-to-person practice of law. So, I've been a lawyer for a long time. I've been a selectman, I've been a moderator, I'm on the board of directors of the Mass Moderators Association. I am the, right now, the editor of the upcoming edition of Town Meeting Time, which you won't see until we sell all the backlog of the last edition. Still have 500 copies to go, so keep your orders coming. It's not on the bestseller list, believe me. That's what I've been up to. You know, and I'm also your neighbor. I live in Situate, although I confess that I underestimated the amount of time it took me to get here today. My memory told me it was about 25 minutes, and it's 35 minutes. So, I'm 35 minutes away. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I haven't gone into a lot of detail about stuff, because I've worked with each one of you in different ways over the years, and, well, I'd like to think you favorably remember those times.
Absolutely. That's why we wanted to meet with you. Do you have any questions, John?
No, no. Rich and I had a chance to sit down and have a breakfast meeting and talk for an hour or so, so I got most of my questions answered there.
So I have a couple, if I might. So any particular areas of expertise in municipal law, or just general practice of all areas?
Well, I certainly have my favorites.
And that'll be good, too. That's a good one. That's even better. That's a better question.
Yeah. You know, my favorite has always been eminent domain, appellate tax board. I love figuring out what things are worth. And with a lot of things, you know, be it an object, an automobile, a piece of land, I don't know, somehow I just have this almost knack of telling you what they're worth. And I'm usually pretty close, I'm not an appraiser. So I love trying those kinds of cases. But of course, you don't want to try those kinds of cases, and so the key is being able to understand what things are worth before you put yourself in a position of having to try those kinds of cases. So I love those things. And I've heard that you have a large appellate tax board case with your biggest commercial taxpayer right now. Certainly, that's an interesting proposition. I love municipal finance, I've always liked that. I like administrative law, I like administration. I am interested in land use. I've certainly had to do a lot more of it over these past few years than I hitherto had done. You know, open meeting law, you have to be interested in that. The ethics laws, I deal with that all the time. Election law, I've tried election cases, I've done numerous recounts, I've done voter registration challenges. You know, those are all the things that I can do and have enjoyed doing.
So if something comes up of a sort of technical nature, some, let's say marijuana, before it really got going, something new, something different, the big firms, of course, have someone that concentrates on that for all their towns. It's different when you're a sole practitioner.
Absolutely. I could probably make a lot of bad jokes about expertise in marijuana, but I'll spare you those. Yeah, I mean, it's very, that's just stuff you have to know. You know, so for example, with my clients, within, oh, 15 minutes of the Attorney General approving the first marijuana moratorium, I had notice of that, and had forwarded notice of the possibility and the form of adopting marijuana moratoriums to my clients. Pretty straightforward stuff. You know, that's something that you have to be on top of these days. And the unfortunate thing about the marijuana laws is that they are changing almost daily. You know, the latest iteration, I guess, is possible pushback of the deadlines for businesses coming into operation. There are some interesting philosophical consequences that go along with that. You know, for example, you know, as the retail aspect of it gets pushed out further, you know, I think you're just going to end up seeing more, I'll call them private entrepreneurs, growing it in their gardens. So you kind of wonder what the future of the retail side of the business will be, when everybody's just going to have a bunch of plants growing with their tomatoes. But I guess that's more of a policy philosophical discussion. But, you know, there's just such a lot going on with the marijuana laws right now, that you have to pay attention to it almost every day.
So I think, one more question for me. I think there's been the suggestion of being designated co-town counsel. Has that kind of structure, have you done that in other towns, where you're co-town counsel, town has another firm that they employ as well?
Yes, and I can say that, for me, I'm happy to serve you in whatever capacity you want me to serve you. I think I can help you with a lot of stuff, also in terms of general legal management. You know, you have a corporation here with a very large budget and a number of employees, and you have a variety of legal issues that present any large corporation with challenges. And I can certainly assist you with the management, regardless of whether I work on a legal project or whether, you know, the existing counsel works on it, or any other counsel. I can certainly assist you in managing the expectations that you have of anybody who's doing work for you, be that helping that counsel understand what it is that you're trying to achieve, helping you understand what it is that outside counsel or other counsel is sending you in terms of work product or billing. I can be your lawyer, as much or as little as you want, but what I could also offer you is the ability to be a legal manager, and look at things for you, and help you assess what it is that you're being presented with.
So can you see problems that could develop, or potential problems, in terms of turf or responsibility with that kind of setup, with a co-counsel? I mean, obviously, it's possible, but it's probably quite workable. Or do you see it as workable?
I do. I know both of the persons who are Copeland and K&amp;P Law's principal contacts for you right now. I know them both personally. One of them, in fact, the firm had, may still have, a mentor/mentee relationship where you would take a newer lawyer and raise them up, if you will. Well, one of those persons was my mentee, and I raised that person up. Now, they'd probably hear this tape and cringe at that characterization. Greg, I mean no offense. But I certainly think I could work with Greg, or Amy, I think has also been assigned to you. It's a fine firm, and as I say, I'm happy to do whatever for you that you want me to do. And as your attorney, should I enjoy that privilege? I respect your desire, and I'm sure KP Law would respect your desire, that our relationship be harmonious and productive. And on a personal level, knowing the individuals involved on that end, I'm sure it would be.
Great.
Any more questions?
That's good for me. Thank you.
If there was something that you didn't feel comfortable with, you'd suggest we go to Copeland Page?
Copeland Page, or any other counsel that might be appropriate for the particular case. There, it's interesting, you know, once you get out on your own, and form your own business, and network with all the other people who are out there in business, you know, there are a lot of people out there who are doing different things, specializing in particular areas. So I would have no hesitation, you know, as your legal manager, should you choose to use me in that fashion, to suggest to you who the best person for any particular job might be. You know, part of my role, as I would see it, in assisting you would be to make sure that you're getting the best legal service for the best price, regardless of who provides it. Maybe it's me, maybe it's not, maybe it's KP Law, maybe it's not, maybe it's some other individual. As somebody who would be taking a managerial approach to this, all I would want for you would be the best result and the best price.
How would that work, Rich? Would we be contracting with them through you, if you were to choose someone outside of K&amp;P?
We could set it up however you wished to do it. Now, right now, you have a contractual relationship, I'm sure, with KP, and you wouldn't address that, but you wouldn't need to touch that. If you wanted a special counsel for, and I don't even know what it would be for at this point, but, you know, suppose you just had some really bizarre claim, that, you know, maybe there was only one or two people in the world who could handle it, you know, how would we address that? Well, you'd say, hopefully, you know, hey, Rich, can you do that? And I'd say, oh, no, I can't. You know, does anybody at KP Law do that? And I would probably say, well, you know, it's really bizarre, I will ask, my guess is probably no. And if the answer was, pardon my viewers, you know, no, them know, then it would be, Rich, can you find somebody who does do that? I would find that person, I would discuss rates with them, I would present that information to you for your review and approval or disapproval.
Okay.
You know, the buck and the power are always with you. The rest of us are your servants.
So it wouldn't necessarily be second opinions? We could be going to you initially with questions. As co-counsel, we really don't have, with the commitment we've got to Copeland Page, it would be a problem for us to come to you?
Not at all.
Okay.
You know, you're the master of the relationship, the relationship between myself and other attorneys, of the relationship of attorneys to this board, that's for you to determine. You know, the amazing thing that I've learned over the years is the incredible power that the client has over the client's attorneys. And I think that clients sometimes underestimate their power over attorneys. This attorney, KP Law, any other attorney, at the end of the day, will do what you want, providing, of course, that it's lawful and ethical. I have no doubt it would be both of those.
Rich, if things were to go well, which I would anticipate they absolutely would, would you be interested in being our primary counsel down the road?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. You know, I think we would want to come up with a, I'm trying to think of a way to describe this that doesn't sound strange. So I'll just throw it out there and make of it what we will. I would want us to find a way where we could all live with each other in a happy relationship that is productive for you. And whether that involves me, you know, coming over periodically and having office hours, attending board meetings from time to time, as you feel appropriate. It's about finding a way for us to really come up with a relationship system that works for you, and is satisfying for me, I mean, quite frankly. I have no doubt that we could do that.
How do we take that step, then? How do we find out what that is?
Well, I think, I mean, I think we're probably going to experiment with this for a little bit, and find out what serves your needs best. You know, would my coming by at certain intervals be useful? Or is it simply enough for you to be able to pick up the phone or shoot me an email? You know, until we've done it for a little while, we won't know what works best. And I know this sounds, oh gosh, I never thought of myself as a touchy-feely kind of person. I've never, certainly, few people have ever said that about me. I've been called other things, but I think we'll just have to live together for a while, and, oh, if there's a reporter here, please don't write that one down. And see how it goes. And if it goes great, and I have no reason to think that it won't, fantastic. If it doesn't, then it didn't, then we all move on to something else. Which, I'll also say, I don't work with a contract, so I won't be asking for a prenuptial You know, the day that either one of us decides that it's not working is the day that one or the other says, you know, maybe we should do something different. It's another way of saying that I work at your will and pleasure, but that sounds kind of cold. But that's also very true.
Well, thank you, Rich. I don't have any more questions. Do you have any follow-up?
I think most of them got answered. I think I agree with Rich, that this is something we need to try for maybe six months, experiment and see how it works out. I think you have to help us in terms of the KP relationship. Obviously, they're not going to feel too comfortable with this.
I have great respect for them, John. And, you know, I'll do my, I wouldn't have worked there for 25 years if I thought they were terrible people or terrible lawyers. They were a fine firm, and I mean that very sincerely. I think we can make it work, and I think it can work in a way that everyone will feel appropriately respected.
So I guess the question is, what's the next step? Do we, do you want to send us a letter or anything, just outlining, or do we just say, okay, let's try it here?
Well, I think if you vote to say, okay, let's try it, what I'll do is I'll, you know, come over in the next few days, and we can sit and talk about how it might work. I mean, long before any meters begin to run or anything like that. You know, I'm looking at this as not a quick buck, I'm looking at seeing whether we can have a nice, long-term relationship.
Do we have to agree on the hourly rate?
Yes, I charge, well, I would charge you $1.50 an hour.
Okay.
I have clients that I charge $400 an hour.
Well, thank you, we appreciate that.
Well, I didn't think you'd hire me at $400.
Absolutely not, as much as we like you. Are you co-
I mean, I'm open to that, but-
Are you co-counsel to any other Copeland Page towns? Just be a new-
I've done special counsel work for Copeland Page towns. The town of Montague springs to mind, where I was working on, I think, some eminent domain matters. I did some special counsel work for Carver. So it's been done, it works.
Ken had a question from the audience.
Hi, Ken, go ahead, ask your question.
If it's okay, may I raise a couple of questions? Ken Thompson, Chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I applaud this effort, as you've all been discussing for a long time. First hand, this reminds me a little bit about the Halifax model, and I don't know if you're familiar with that.
Yes.
They have a general counsel, who triages things, and they go find the nuclear regulatory person and the whatever. So on one hand, this is a seemingly customary practice around us, and I support that. On the other hand, we have activity that goes on every month with counsel, and the concept of co-counseling is great in the long run, but we have stuff in the pipe. And include tomorrow night, hearing. So at some point, whether it's six months, or six weeks, or some other period, there's something about horses and streams, where we have to look to town council for opinions and concepts, and we need some direction relatively early in this process as to sort of A or B or something, because we've got stuff in the pipeline, we're talking to current town council, and when that shifts, whichever way, for whatever reason, we have to be right there, because when I call at some date in the future, I need to know who I'm calling.
Well, I think normally, it's normal practice that counsel would finish up anything they're currently working on, isn't it, Rich, rather than change?
Oh, yes. And I think you raise, number one, an excellent example of what I'm proposing, but also a significant issue. You know, I would view this as a co-counsel relationship, not Rich sharpening his elbow and pushing everybody off to the side, at least, you know, I think that's what we're looking at.
I would think, too, you'd just finish out with, you know, don't, just assume Rich isn't here.
Raising the issue, if you would let us know when things are forking or-
Absolutely, absolutely. Definitely keep you-
With your permission, actually, the things that are in the pipeline, you know, you've already paid counsel to become familiar with those things, and so you have an investment of time, money, emotional capital in those ongoing projects, and it only makes the best financial and practical sense to continue down that way.
Well, up to a point, and it's efficient, but when we have our zoning officer on the phone on a regular basis with counsel, you know, we have to look at what point that counsel is the right phone number for incoming business.
And I think that, with respect, I think that's one of the things that we need to-
Yeah, kind of the legal management and-
Right.
Excellent, thank you very much for-
But astute, astute question.
Yeah, thank you, Ken, very much. Good points.
That's probably part of the discussion we need to have with you.
Yes.
Because all the boards and commissions are going to say, how does this work? So if you can come in and spend some time with us, that would be good.
Yeah, maybe even having a meeting, just to talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah. What are you doing on Wednesday?
I'll be briefing from the hearing tomorrow night.
It'll be interesting hearing about that. At your convenience, of course.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so how did we leave it? Is Rich going to send us a letter?
I think we're going to meet first, is that the idea?
Well, I think if you took a vote, keeping in mind that if after our meeting you decide that this isn't going to work, you can say, forget that bad idea. I don't think that will happen, by the way, but take a vote. I don't think that will happen, by the way, but take a vote. We'll set up a meeting. We'll work out a plan. It might be good to have a copy of KP Law's most recent status report to you, so we can take a look at what is in the pipeline, because I know they send them out pretty regularly, so I'm sure there's one that's at least six months or more recent. And perhaps maybe gather up the last year's worth of legal bills, because you can tell a lot about what's going on from looking at the bills. And we can just sit down and look at all that and figure something out.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion that we enter into an agreement on a hourly basis at $150 an hour with Attorney Richard Bowen.
To act as co-counsel?
To act as co-counsel.
As co-town council?
Yep.
Okay. All right, I'll second. Any discussion?
My only discussion is, I think, pretty quickly, we should just keep KMP updated.
Absolutely.
Even right away.
Right. Who wants to talk to him?
I can let him know.
Okay.
I can... I'll let him know that we're going to be entering this with Rich. Okay.
I would just say, in my three years previously, I really appreciated the work they did, and I had a great relationship with Alana and loved that I could email her at 4:00 a.m. and she'd have a response for me at 4:30 a.m. We have another one that does four o'clock emails, though, I see along the way, but I hope we can stay just absolutely as cordial as possible.
Absolutely.
Well, yeah, I don't see this as a conflict. I think each has their area of influence, and it's going to be up to us to figure out how to make this work well.
Right.
I agree, and the preemptive or the preventative medicine, I think, is exactly what we're looking for, and I'm a huge believer in staying out of trouble, and it's much less...
Right, making good decisions to begin with.
Much more cost-effective.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Rich.
Well, thank you very much. It's a real pleasure to be back with you, and I'm looking forward to coming over.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks.
So do you want to coordinate with Rich a time for us all to get together?
Sure.
Okay. Perfect.
Excuse me, would he be called legal manager or just co-counsel?
Call him co-counsel.
Co-counsel for now.
Then we'll figure out, won't we?
Okay. Excellent. Okay. All right, so do you want to take... Oh, Ken, go ahead, Ken.
You're on camera, and I want to know which one of you is Jeff.
Yeah.
Oh.
Is that me? Am I Jack Leary?
No.
Wow.
Thank you, Ken.
You're welcome.
What does this say?
No, it says Christine. Yeah, no, yours is lying up.
Okay, perfect.
That one's commentary.
You made him...
Oh, that's funny. Do you want to take Chief on board, as long as he's here? He has a seven o'clock appointment, but...
We need to... We probably have to wait until seven, don't we?
Okay. In case somebody shows up. Gotcha. Okay. All right, are you okay, Chief, to hang out for a little bit?
Perfectly fine.
Okay.
So sorry, it's just...
That's true. There may be people coming in to talk.
Something crazy comes up.
Okay. All right, so let's get into board's goals for coming year. Financial management. John and I had a conference call with Monica on, what was it, Thursday?
I think it was Thursday.
I think it was Thursday. And we... And Nate attended as well. We talked about the financial policies, and I think we pretty much finished that up on the phone.
I think so. Yeah, and I think Barbara reviewed them after, and she seems to feel comfortable.
Okay.
I don't know where she went, but...
Okay. That's excellent. So then, we just need to let Monica know, so she can remove the watermark?
There is one thing that came out of it. Monica asked whether we wanted her to appear, something like a full-blown introduction or just a summary. And she mentioned Wilburn. She said she'd send it to me, and this is her full-blown... It's awesome.
Isn't that the CIP plan, though?
It's more than that. It goes into... It is basically CIP, construction in progress, but it talks about the town, its goals, et cetera.
I saw it, too. It was very nice.
Now, the question is, as I understood what she was saying, if she does it the first time, we have to do it the second.
Right. We just need... If there's changes, we need to keep it so it's a, you know, current document.
Yeah. My feeling is, this is an awesome document, but do we feel comfortable...
Maintaining it.
Maintaining it.
Well, I think the data will be the same, or a lot of it will be, but, you know, depending on what we've got, because there's... I mean, this covers everything. So the options are, we either go with something like this for Plimpton, or we go with a much...
Abbreviated.
Abbreviated version of this information.
And it seems to me that, if the good Lord willing, we'll have a town administrator, and that that person will be doing this. I also feel like this document will be a wonderful selling point to the job. I mean, this really sort of organizes things for that person.
The only issue I have is, we're going from sort of ground zero, and we're leaping over stages. We're going to a much more higher professional stage, and whether this one person, you know, with all we're going to have on that plate, can do it, I don't know. But I would love to see us take a crack at this.
Well, and if we don't do it now, it's never... We're never going to have this.
Yeah.
You think there'd be a problem with going to that high level and then backing off down the road?
Not for me. I would say, let's do it, but I don't know. Did you have that feeling?
I think we can... This is something we could maintain.
I think so.
But we do need to request an extension in order for her...
Yes.
...to put this document together, because it's going to be more time-consuming than if we went with the abridged version.
I think we put in all the work to do this, and hopefully, the goal is to professionalize and misprofessionalizes. Seems like at worst, we could aim high, and if we have to back off, we back off.
Okay. All right. All right. That sounds perfect. Oh, thank you for doing that. Okay, so I'll let Monica know that we would prefer to go with the full narrative to accompany our CIP and financial policies. So the amendment is, all right, refers to the service agreement between the town, UMass Cullen Center. All right, so the center will use reasonable efforts to provide professional services from the date of this agreement until June 30th, 2017, whereas the center is willing and able to continue providing the services described in the agreement, whereas the town remains in need of said services, and whereas the town and the center wish to extend the period of time of the contract to October 31st, 2017. So it's... That should give us plenty of time...
I would think so.
...to get this squared away. So do we have a motion to...
So moved.
Okay. Second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, so I'll sign this and email, or do you want to scan this in, Bree?
Yeah.
And then I'll email it to Monica, and we'll be good to go.
Very good.
Great, thank you. All right, anything else on financial?
I don't think so.
All right. So what about technology? Anything new and exciting?
Yes. We have a presentation set up for Wednesday afternoon that Mac and I are attending over at the Dennett Elementary School to see the... How they use technology for screening and showing documents that would be able to be seen on the cable, et cetera.
You know, I meant this early this morning to remind you to... Did we post that?
Oh.
When is it, tomorrow?
Yeah. No, Wednesday.
I wonder, maybe if we can go and just have a demonstration, but do no deliberation.
Oh, there's no deliberation.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's get through it that way.
Yeah. Okay, and if that's a problem, I'll just... You go, because I've already seen it, but...
I think maybe if we deliberate here, I think we can get away with that.
Yeah, as long as you don't deliberate, right. Okay.
Where's Rich when we need him?
All right, so that was technology. Public safety?
They have... The public safety committee has a meeting tomorrow night, which either I'll attend or attend, or listen to the recorder and stay on top of it.
Okay. Anything new on grants?
I haven't heard anything from Colleen. I'm not sure if she's going to come back to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think she'll go back to us. Hi, Ken.
The grant for the $16,000 that was originally thinking about large document reproduction versus other things we could do with that, has that moved up of that?
The feedback we got was that we, by and large, don't need printing for large documents, that for the few that we could do, we can go to an outside vendor. But what we probably need is some one or two color printers, but instead of having a high-volume color printer, get some smaller, almost desktop.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that would... They're like $500 or $600 apiece, so that's the route. And we've asked Michael Rodriguez, who's our technology person, to look into getting that and getting us quotes.
Those prices, I'd like to bid on them.
Yeah. I mean, so we're probably talking $1,000 by the time we're through, instead of...
Well, I was curious then, what happens to the rest of the grant, $16,000?
So at town meeting, we approved the software for the town clerk.
$9,000.
And we approved the exchange server and its backup and software, et cetera. So effectively, only about $2,000 of the $16,000 was left.
Oh.
Okay. I mean, was spent. So we still have $14,000 in that grant. Now, we're looking, this demonstration on Wednesday, we had put in for a... It's an electronic screen plus a high-volume printer, $9,000 and $8,000 respectively. Those were turned down, and quite frankly, would the state turn them down? We're not going to pay that kind of money. The Dennett Elementary School has a electronic version of the screen that they got from Acker's up in Brockton that's probably half that, maybe even a little less. And we're thinking, if that's, you know, if that works out, that might be something we would do here for this room, because right now, when we talk about what we're seeing, nobody else can see it. We'd like to be able to do that.
We have that in all hearings, as you know. Nobody can see the blueprint, so...
Right.
Not just yourselves, but for the record, you know, COM/COM, planning, zoning, it would be great to put a print down and show it on them.
Yeah. So that's where we are. If we have money left over after we've decided what to do with that, then we'll look at other technology needs.
That's right. Thank you.
Okay. What about whiteboard on wheels?
Whiteboard on wheels is my low technology.
So if this doesn't work out, that's option two?
No, I want a whiteboard in here anyways.
In frustration, I went down to Staples one day, and the only thing I could afford $100 was a four-foot by three-foot, but it's in the building department and dry erase markers, because it was for our workflow work group. You're welcome to use it. It's better than nothing. You can scribble in front of people.
We should have a whiteboard of, you know, fairly good size, on wheels, that you can transport between the two rooms, or over into the cullens.
Staples and...
It's probably $600, something like that, but we'll wait and see what the presentation does and see if there's a need after.
Okay. All right, that's our fallback position.
But that's my fallback.
It's amazing, the distance screen showing stuff on the wall, and then I saw some people who were up and writing on the wall one day.
Oh, yeah.
And say, well, what if we put a thing over here, right on the wall, at the screen? They went on the screen with the...
Thinking that, yeah, that it was like a whiteboard.
So they're... You know, you want a whiteboard, blue screen, whiteboard.
Then it has, you know, their technology in place, and if we proceed, then we would have them, the vendor, come in and demonstrate it here. So then you get an idea. It's pretty neat.
Oh, yeah. Very familiar.
Very nice. All right, anything new on volunteerism?
No.
Okay.
Except that Tara's got a list of 96 appointments for us.
Terrific. So that's a lot of...
I think she's coming in... No, these are people who are... They expire.
Right, right, but still, they're volunteers.
They're volunteers, yeah.
All right. Ken, did you have something?
Yeah, I was wondering if this is one of your goals for the year, you would consider, even if it's a lower priority, some criteria. On one hand, we want to encourage all the volunteerism that we can get. On the flip side, there's a little bit of an obligation to some people to learn the subject better they're going and to attempt. We have horrific absentee records on certain committees, and I beg this board to, over the course of the year, look at those. And at some point, those boards are being hampered by people who miss more meetings than they make, and those result in continuances. And in some boards, like planning, that results in a constructive approval. Some gets approved. Nine grand Bill Baker is a result of not getting two planning board meetings in time. Boom, you got a lot. For another time, I think there are criteria, on one hand, for qualifications, certain boards, entry-level people, great, certain very senior boards, you really should be on earlier boards, but somewhere in there is learning the material and going to the courses and coming to the meetings with relative frequency. And at some point, they are more of a detriment to the committee than they are an asset, because continuances are extensive and incredibly effective interfering to town residents who are trying to get things through town. That can't happen when continuances happen because of absence.
Well, it is a commitment, and we talked in the past about the possibility of a bylaw where, if you miss a certain number of meetings, that you're no longer on the committee, and that might be something that we need to do this year.
We tried that four years ago, maybe three years ago, and just tripped over so many problems.
Really?
I think legal and otherwise. I mean, that may be something we have to explore with...
With Rich.
Yeah.
Okay.
Paying for it. And the other thing is vacancies.
True.
Some boards that have vacancies, not just some of the recent ones with high paying points, but some have been longstanding for a long time, and that results in the inability to get a quorum, if you're a people to choose from.
True.
If I can speak from experience, from the number of continuances in a six-month period that are beyond...
Yeah, it's definitely something we need to get squared away.
Yeah.
All right, anything else with the public safety building committee?
Actually, that was what I was commenting on.
Okay, so there's a meeting?
And it's Wednesday night.
Wednesday, okay. All right, so we already did the Eagle Scout project website updating. We were talking about revisions to board and committee pages and having contacts to do that, like putting one appoint person. Do you want to hold that again?
It's going to be a massive job, and, you know, I went on the police just to see. I was looking for something. Barbara Lee's still on there as secretary. You know, you go to the different pages, nobody's updating there, nobody's even paying any attention, and Tara's carrying all the load, and it's just not fair to her, and we need to figure out how to change the behavior.
And I think, didn't... I think we discussed this a little at last Wednesday's meeting, too. It seems like the first step is just training the board chairs.
Yeah.
And albeit, I guess there's been previous attempts, and we all need to learn how to do it. I guess, I don't know how we get to that, but we need to formalize some training.
Well, Tara was going to put something together for us and offer some training, I think during the day and then in the evening, to try to get as many people trained as possible.
And I think we just have to formalize that. You know, it just turns into one more thing for already harried board chairs, and I think we just, we have to make that simple in terms of time commitment and simple in terms of doing the work. in terms of doing the work. I mean, I totally agree. This is something that needs to get done. But maybe it needs to wait a little bit until we can direct full attention to it.
We got a ton of stuff on our plate right now.
Well, then let's just hold off on this and we'll put it on the parking lot.
Mr. Thompson's got a question. She is updating to make it current, so at least will be for this upcoming year. And then it's going to be in the future.
Okay. Well, once we get everything updated, then it won't be such a project to just maintain it, but we need to get it current.
Yeah, that's why she has until 7/1 and that's why you have...
Okay, so she is putting something together for us, some training? And then we'll revisit this then?
Well, I think she wants to update the board, the website.
Okay, based on the appointment slips?
Based on the information that we have. Because we could put these two boards, this will go out, we're going to ask them what they want, in case someone says, "Take some off," and it changes up, it changes again.
Okay.
I would say that you're looking at August.
Okay.
Me, in my opinion.
All right, well, let's, let's hold this then.
She has people that haven't come in to be sworn in. Very important that you come in and be sworn in.
Yeah.
All right. Ken?
I was going to ask you about the way this question is worded. Are you looking for a single individual to do the changes for all the departments committees? Or are you looking for each committee to do their own?
Each committee to do their own.
And that's where I thought we left off, because I brought up the Barbara Lee thing a couple weeks ago.
Yeah, yeah, each committee needs to do their own.
And for what it's worth, Alan Wheelock is put on the agenda for our next meeting at the Bylaw Review Committee, which of the committee members will be responsible for maintaining the information and the contacts. And I agree, I think that information has to go out to all the boards and remind them to read their websites and clean them up and put some spotlight on it. Because it does need the information that only the board or the committee has. Tara doesn't know.
Right.
And if you're talking about filling out a form and sending it to her, that's not in her job description.
Nope.
So it really, it needs to be clear, slightly clearer to the chairs, that each committee needs somebody in the breach. And then if something is wrong on their page, everybody can point to their department once they've been apprised.
Right.
Thank you.
All right, so then we can hold the assigning a board and committee administrator to, because first we have to update before we have an administrator. Okay, appointments and renewals for boards and committees from the town clerk. So you have got a stack for us, Bree?
I do. I don't know what to do.
I think that's right there.
Ooh, a master list, beautiful.
Bree, I'm going to give that to you. That's from Monica.
A master list.
Okay, so we are making all of these appointments?
Yes.
Okay.
Can we do them en masse?
So, did you want to do them?
Yes.
By the committee?
Let's go by committee.
Did you want to do it by list submitted?
Why don't we do it by committee? How, well, how is that organized? Your packet there?
Alphabetical order, just like that.
They're in alphabet order?
Alphabetical order by committee.
By committee.
Okay, then let's, let's go this way.
Okay. So, so do you want to do it by committee? Or do you want to read through every name on this and then it can just be one vote?
Now, do we know everybody's agreed that they're going to re-up?
I do believe so. Let me get Tara to hear that.
Yeah, let's get Tara.
Because that's what's going to be when we send this list out.
And then if, I would just say we just do it overall, unless you want to go through. Well, let's see what Tara has to say. I guess she's...
I think maybe we should just go, I think it'll be fine this year. Definitely next year, I think we should formalize this a little bit more. Letter out to each committee to their recommendation on reappointment. For example, we did do that with Community Preservation Committee. There were three people whose terms were up. And we did have a vote recommending them to us to be reappointed. And maybe next year, I'd love to see that each board do that.
That's nice.
Not that they're appointing, but that they're recommending.
Right, they're recommending, okay.
I don't think we have any controversy, but sooner or later, there's...
Right, it's nice to have the board's recommendation.
Come on over here.
So Tara, how do you suggest we make these appointments?
So normally, this was just a preliminary list for you guys to see. Most of them are annual appointments because we've gotten through the last couple of years with a good cycle of three-year terms. So Bridgette and I were going to send all of the boards and committees who have people on this list, send them their list and say, "These are your appointments that are expiring in a couple of weeks." You know, please confirm that you would like to reappoint them. If you know any different or if there's any errors or omissions, let us know. And I printed the appointment slips now, just so that we can help with the timing of it. Because we don't want to be delayed from you guys being able to sign the appointment slips. But we're really going to wait for feedback from all the board committees.
So we're not making appointments tonight? This is what we hope?
Yeah, we do, I did do the appointment slips so that, what we did last year was had you sign them and we held them. And then when we heard back from the board or committee, if somebody, if they said, "No, that person doesn't want to do it," we just pulled the appointment slip.
Was that the most efficient way for this to do this?
Yeah, because it helped with the timing.
Okay, so you want us to make all these appointments then? And Lisa, anyone that's not interested?
Well, sign, you can sign them and you can reference the list that we gave you tonight on your minutes that you've signed these appointment slips. And then we'll do a final revised list that shows who's going to be coming in by July 1st.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so that we'll sign the appointment slips based on the list that Tara has provided us?
Okay.
Okay, I make a motion that we sign the appointment sheets list, as Tara's outlined on this, subject to her going out to the boards and commissions and verifying that these people want to continue their...
Yeah.
Their what? Their service.
Their service.
What do you think?
I think, I would suggest, for this year, I think we have to get this done. I think maybe next year, we should start this process a couple months before, so that each of these boards and committees can actually vote their recommendation to us.
Yeah, I agree. We're doing this simultaneously, like I said, with the other company that we're getting a boards and committees database from. So I just wanted to get it done this year, this way.
No, and I agree.
But we'll have better reporting next year and we'll, this is the most accurate list we've ever had and updated. And I've been able to easily merge the records so that, you know, it's not a manual process, so...
And I totally applaud you because we've never had a list that this is this old.
Well, I'll do, last year I provided you all with a list with everybody's terms and when they expire. And I'll do that again after we do a little bit of revising.
Okay.
Great.
All right, so we have a motion?
To...
To sign the appointment slips.
Subject to...
Subject to confirmation of the appointments by Tara.
Because they're preliminary.
Okay.
I'll second that. I think there's going to be a comment.
Okay.
I understand the process. I was here last year when you approved the list blanket. And I applaud Mark's effort to look at them extensively over the next year. I'd like, in the interim, to, and I have probably used up my photo questions for the evening, apologize, this is the last one, because I'm not going to cut into Warren's time. But in the statement that you would like to send to the committees, requests for a list of people who would like to continue, on one hand, that's the volunteerism that we talked about earlier. The question I ask, and I guess I'm curious about it, I may not be here for selectmen's rants and raves. I don't know where that came, but it sounds great. I'd love to be here. I don't get the thing on my satellite because I can't get...
Go to YouTube.
It's on YouTube.
Oh, okay, great. Because that sounds interesting. But the question is, because the committee thinks this list is going to renew, does not beg the question or the discussion either within the committee of those volunteerism issues, including attendance? And it does not give you a chance, other than to take their list of availability, without this process, which I hope wouldn't even take a year, to look to the rants and raves or issues around individuals, regardless of availability and interest in re-upping. I mean, and I'm not going to go into this, other than individual off the record, but there are lots of people on a lot of committees that are not...
We hear you, but we need to...
Not showing up, yeah.
Yeah, we need to move forward.
Or, 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 and, and taking their list of availability should not be the only criteria for your...
Absolutely, absolutely. Good point.
Totally agree.
Okay, so we have a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we'll sign the appointment slips and work towards modifying the process for next year.
So we're going to sign all those at the end of the meeting?
Yeah, we'll sign all those at the end of the meeting. Okay, so now being a little after seven, we've got Chief Worsari here to talk to us about the possible reassignment of a police vehicle to a fire services vehicle and the fire clerk job description.
Yes. The first point was that I'd like to discuss a proposal with you folks to transfer one of the police cars to a service car position for the fire department. A service car position would be used for things such as inspections, the daily inspections that we have. Actually, we usually do them Tuesdays or Thursdays. Smoke inspections, business inspections, things like that, above-ground storage, tank inspections, all those things. It's a more efficient use of a vehicle rather than, if I'm unavailable, sending the officers, usually with the ambulance, to do that. And that's, we need to keep that with them, the ones that are on duty. And there's usually an officer on every day with myself. So that's part of the proposal, that we would be able to use a more efficient vehicle and save our ambulance back. And I don't really, I don't like ambulances out in front of people's house anyway, but that's kind of really the only choice I have, other than to send a large fire truck, which, you know, is not good either. So that was my original proposal. Some of the other things we've seen, one of the big changes we've seen is in how we exchange drugs at our medical control hospital, the BI. We used to be able to, when we needed drugs, just do an exchange right there. Well, if it's an emergency, we can. But other than that, we have to make an appointment and then go back at a pre-designated time, depending on what their schedules are like, to make that exchange. That means the ambulance would have to roll out of town. I don't like doing that. So this service car would also have that duty also, to be able to do that. And another thing could be some of the paramedics that have to do hospital time for continued CEUs, there's a certain amount every year they have to do. They could take that to the BI for the class. It would be a much more efficient way to, you know, conduct the daily operations of the fire department. So if that was possible, if we could do that, that'd be a great thing to do. I think the biggest thing for it would be, we'd have to paint the two white doors black and then change out the light colors that are on the vehicle. And we've got some stuff in stock and I could do it for a pretty good price, you know? And then continue.
So it wouldn't have to be red?
Well, most, most of it does. We have some stuff in stock that kind of matches up. You might have to do, and I could change, like, those light bulbs are $2,000 or $3,000. We could take that off and put some inside strip lighting for much cheaper. And plus, we do have some stuff on hand. The biggest thing would be to paint those, the two white doors black. And then, you know, some minor markings. We wouldn't have to do the full-blown gold leaf, you know, like you see on pinstripe and all that stuff. You know, we could do it a lower profile, but still a designated fire department vehicle. And, you know, continue to use that vehicle that we've paid for. Chief Dillon was all for it. He thought it was a great idea. And I ran it by John one day. We talked about it, so I wanted to give a proposal. And I think it's an efficient way to meet that need that we have now.
How many vehicles do we have? Not ambulances and fire engines, but you have one, the deputy has one.
Deputy has one. And then we have that pickup truck, the military pickup truck, which is like a utility vehicle for things like that.
So the only cost, really, is just updating this and registering it, ensuring it?
Right, correct, right. And I imagine we'd have to do a plate transfer.
Yeah.
So budgetary consequences?
Well, I mean, you have your, you have your maintenance that occurs, regular routine maintenance, like oil changes, things like that. And the inspection sticker, that type of thing.
But you can cover it within your budget?
I believe we can, yes, absolutely. As a matter of fact, I can bet, just on gas savings alone, rather than rolling that ambulance with the big V-10 down the road, that...
And so theoretically, whatever savings there are, there'll be some savings in the police line as well?
I...
Well, no, they were going to trade it in anyways, right?
They were going to trade it in?
That's one of the...
Get rid of it.
Oh, I missed that part.
That's one that they're passing on, right?
Okay, okay, great.
And this is an SUV, not a car, right?
This one is. It's the 116 car. It's the first Explorer that they had purchased.
Okay.
I believe in later on, another one of the cars comes up, too. But this would be the first one that's available. And it's multipurpose, you know, for the weather and things like that, too.
This is a relatively young vehicle that is in good health?
My understanding, it has a low 80,000, 84,000 miles on it. The maintenance is up. It's a good vehicle. I think they even have a new set of tires in the trailer of the box over there.
Driven by a little old policeman, then?
Yep, right. I checked first. It is a very good, safe vehicle. And then it could, it could be certainly used for those types of things. Which as we grow and as things, see, what I'm trying to do is, I used to do a lot of the inspections myself. Well, you have to transfer this knowledge of code enforcement over to your junior officers. And as we have an increase in calls for inspections, I need help, too. So it's been a really good thing that I've been transferring this knowledge over to them, to the captains and to the lieutenants. And then this would be a way for them to, again, I don't like rolling ambulances out in front of people's houses, but that's what we've been, that's what we have. So this will, you know, make it a much more efficient and more cost-effective.
Yeah, absolutely. It sounds like a much better plan than using the ambulance.
I think so. And as a PB ambulance service, if we have to call for a second medic, someone could come in and take that and make it to the scene, rather than, and I don't like them using their own cars, but sometimes they have to. I mean, they have red light permits, but there are legal ramifications that are on them in their vehicle. And we'd just as soon reduce that, too. So this will effectively assist us in that.
Okay. All right, want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we move forward on the reassignment of the police vehicle to the fire, to a fire service vehicle.
Second?
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, folks. Thank you so much.
Great, thanks, chief, very much.
Yeah, and I guess, okay, yes.
Do you hear and make of that?
I don't...
That's what I need to...
Okay, I'll get that...
You had the number. What was it, the one?
It was 116.
116.
Right, I can't quite remember that.
Okay.
And my understanding is you guys would like to discuss the clerk's position that we've, we've kind of hammered out.
Or if you've got an update, because I know you guys have been working on the job description.
It was in your package?
Mm-hmm, thank you.
So basically, what Warren and I and Barbara Gomez and Dylan met to go through the responsibilities. And then based on that, I took the police chief's job description for the administrative assistant and modified it to just reflect what we had discussed. And I think you're comfortable with this, right?
Very much so. I reviewed the final draft today. And I think you've touched on all the things we felt we should add. And I think it really gives a clear understanding of what the position entails.
The position is going to be 15 hours per week. It's $15 an hour. Warren can adjust the hours as, you know, is it going to be three hours, five days a week, or maybe five hours, three days a week? I think that's up to him and the person when they, when they finally go through it. But it's something that's needed and I support this.
And this one is in the budget?
This is, it's in the budget and was approved by the Finance Committee.
For 2018, fiscal '18, right?
Fiscal '18.
This is not July 1st.
Okay.
We'll be lucky if we have somebody by then.
And, you know, I mean, the fire department is a business office and we've been managing it. But there are times when we may be out on a call and we're unavailable to take a call and, you know, schedule the appointments. Because there's all types of things you could expect, you know, general questions, notifications, those things, which at least for, you know, the morning time is usually the busy time. So, that would help us, like John said, you know, I mean, two, three hours, depending on how we work it out. Monday through Thursday are the biggest days, Friday slows down a little bit, as far as the business of the fire department goes. So, I believe 15 hours is a good number, a good starting number, and a fair number. And I thought when we designed this whole article, that that was enough to meet that need without, you know, going over the top, too. So, I think it was a great idea, and I thank you for the support of the town to get us the position.
So, when do we, is this the final document?
I believe so, as long as everybody feels comfortable. I feel comfortable with it.
It's excellent, yeah.
All right, do we want to vote on it next week, get a chance to read it tonight, or do you want to...
Yeah, we can wait a week.
Read it, yeah, hold it and vote next week?
Can't go out till next...
That's correct.
If it's not a problem to wait a week, I would, I would have to read it.
All right, so let's hold this until next week, and then we'll vote on it. And then, where do you plan on advertising?
Well, I mean, we have to post it, of course, and John and I, Barbara, were working on how we were going to set that up, and they were willing.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think we could talk to Tara and to the wage and personnel, and anybody who has a good idea of how we should do it, tell us.
Shoot it out, yep.
All right.
I'm new to it.
Okay, so...
I just applaud you guys for putting, putting this together, it's beautiful.
It is, nice document.
And it's going to save a lot of time.
Well, kudos to the chief of police for doing his, too.
Right, right. It was a collaboration based on his format that, that we've helped, they've helped before with him in designing, and we were very happy to get that basic template that we worked on it, and it was a huge help by Pat.
Perfect.
Very good.
Excellent. All right, so we'll hold this for next week and take a vote. Thank you, chief, very much.
Thank you, guys, so much, it's a pleasure.
The chair of planning is saying, I don't know, she...
Deb, did you want to talk to us?
No, I was just wondering if we had heard anything?
Yes, we signed his slip, and I believe he was sworn in, so I think he was planning on attending your meeting.
Okay, good.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so expiring contracts, do we want to delve into that, or hold that until next week?
I don't know what we're doing there. What are we doing?
I think most of them have been, we've renewed them.
Yeah, didn't we go through them last week?
We did.
We have one in correspondence. Do we want to deal with this one tonight, Bree, or do we want to list them all next week?
I think one of them we should adjust.
Okay. So, in correspondence, is the computer service contract that ends this fiscal year. So, probably, we want to sign that, just that we have a contract. And then there are contracts for the next two years.
I haven't seen that, though.
Okay.
The contract, I mean, what are we renewing?
The one for this present year that's ending, those are the terms, and the next two years are the exact same terms.
I think it's been the same for years.
What do they do?
This is Michael Rodriguez.
Oh, this is Michael Rodriguez. Okay, I didn't realize he was in Swansea, okay.
Yeah, yeah, he is. That's his local computer store, is what he operates under. Okay.
All right, so, well, let's sign...
We'll probably need a year to figure out what we're going to do with technology anyways.
Well, let's sign the current year, so at least we have a contract for now.
Sign the current year.
So, I make a motion that we approve the contract with local computer store of Swansea.
Until June 30th of 2017.
Which is another 11 days.
I need it off file.
We need it off file.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, until June 30th, 2017.
Okay.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bree and I touched this briefly. So, these are the next two years, and we wondered if we shouldn't put this on the agenda for next week with actually a list of the contracts that we would be approving.
Mm-hmm. Which, and I have the list, Maya has come in.
Perfect.
Cook Insurance has come in. We're, uh...local computer store, Edron Business, Social Generator, the Visiting Nurse Association.
I just want to touch on this after.
Okay.
And that's all that I have so far. I need to talk to Highway, because I need something.
Oh, I emailed Jim to ask him if he still needed, if they were going to renew that, and I haven't heard back from him.
Okay. And then there's something from assessors, from Vision?
What is it?
Valuation update?
Yeah, I think that's their, isn't Vision the one who works with them on the...
The mapping?
No, the, well, maybe the mapping, but is it the valuation of homes? They go up...
I'm not sure.
I think we need to know more about that one.
Okay. And then I, there was, are you going to, are we extending Collins Center?
Yes, we, we just voted to extend the Collins Center. That's going to be till 10:31 17.
So, it's only for another couple of months?
Yeah.
I just want to...
Can I ask a question on this local computer store? We pay monthly payment, but then do we get charged something over that?
He pays our backup maintenance for us, because we don't have a credit card.
But each time he comes out here, if, he doesn't have a certain amount of hours, and then over that hours, we have to pay a month, hourly fee, or not?
I've never had a bill.
Okay, okay.
So, this takes care of everything?
Everything. And like I said, he's, he also pays for maintenance, because the only way they accept payment is on credit card, and he can't get that.
Okay.
So, he does that for us, and he doesn't charge us extra.
So, are we holding this till next week?
Yeah, well, my issue is with 2019. You know, we're going to have...
You can only do one year, we can't...
Yeah, this is a two-year.
He did, he gave you a two-year and a one-year.
Okay, so we're just going to do the one-year.
I have no problem with the one-year.
Okay.
But I think the town administrator may have some ideas on this.
Okay.
For the second year.
Barbara told me, we can never do more than a one-year contract, because you can't take funds from one year.
From one previous, one year to another fiscal year.
Oh, that's true, okay.
Okay. All right, are you okay with signing the contract for another, just one year?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract from July 1st, 2017, until June 30th, 2018, for a local computer store of Swansea, Mass.
Okay, so we're not going to do all the contracts at the same time, then?
No.
No.
Well, I think we'll do them as they come in.
Okay.
All right, so...
I'll second the motion.
I'll...
Do you have any discussion?
No, I'm okay. The only thing I was debating is whether we should just have a list of all of them on the agenda. I think that makes sense, unless anyone wants to come in and comment.
No, yeah, why don't we do that for next time?
Yeah.
For next week? Because the list is getting smaller and smaller, off ones left.
We'll put, we'll list the contracts we're going to talk to next week, in case anybody wants to come in.
Okay. That's what I kind of thought that way.
Perfect.
So, should I, we take that and put that onto this?
No, no, we're going to sign this one, no.
Yeah, we'll sign this one, and then everything else, we'll talk about...
This is kind of...
Next time.
A little bit off the subject, but next week, I'm going to be late. So, on the things, you know, you need my vote. If you put those towards the back, I think I'll be here by 7 o'clock.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's going to be interesting, because we'll come to it. We have a couple of executive sessions potentially, maybe...
Well, we had one to talk about SOLA, right?
SOLA, zoning enforcement officer actually came in and asked for time as well, a cease and desorse where there's been no, or where there's been no return. I suppose we could save that for the next week.
I'm comfortable, if you don't mind meeting in executive session, I'm comfortable with either of those, whatever you vote.
Okay.
We've already talked about SOLA, so I...
Yeah, but we want you intimately involved in this.
Yeah, we want you to say yes.
I don't think SOLA was on the list of the ones I was responsible for.
No, no. All right, so we're going to hold expiring contracts until next week, and you're going to have it on the agenda, everything that is left. Perfect. All right, so we did the Collins Center, we already did the update there. The appointment request from planning board for Bob Carling, update from town council. Town council said since Bob Carling was not a special employee, that he could serve on the planning board without there being any conflict of interest. So, we signed that appointment slip, and that is done.
Actually, all kidding aside, I mean, I, by process of elimination, I'll deal with SOLA along the way, and you get a lot on your plate.
You do have a lot on your plate.
That plate's, it's going to even out sooner or later.
It will.
And SOLA is really heavy on my side.
All right, so how about an update of your meeting with Dale to talk about the transition?
I wrote up the minutes, that, you want me to just read this, or you saw the minutes, right?
I did see the minutes. Did you have a chance?
Yeah, they look good.
Which, which pretty well summarizes what we talked about.
Okay.
As it should.
And it was sent to Dale. I haven't heard any feedback from him, so I assume he's all right with it.
Mm-hmm.
So, basically, legal issues are in advance. SOLA is going to be discussed in executive session. Grants, Dale made us aware that there may be some future grants under the Green Community Program, and we'll just have to monitor that.
Mm-hmm.
Michael Rodriguez, local computer store, we just signed, so that's in place. And housekeeping, Dale will supply a list of all passwords for his computer, laptop, and programs installed on him. The computer and laptop is town property, so Mike and I are going to monitor that to see what comes in, just to make sure everything gets forward.
Okay.
Dale stated the cell phone's his, and he's going to supply us with a document, just sort of, here's what's open and maybe needs to be looked at.
Okay.
And I think Mike asked him if he'd be available by telephone, he indicated he would.
Sure. When's his last day, tentatively?
June 30th.
June 30th. Oh, okay. All right.
Maybe while we're on that subject, we had, there had been some discussion of having a brief celebration next Monday night. Maybe we can wait until you come in, there might be chocolate tart, and I guess we could just let everyone, maybe let everyone in the townhouse know, that, you think you'll be here by 7, or...
Yeah, I don't think I'll be, I've got a 4:30 in Milton, that's probably going to take an hour.
Only three hours to get home from Milton and our shower.
5:30, 5:30 in Monday night, I don't know.
No, we can schedule for like 7:30.
So, maybe we put 7:30?
That way, maybe we could try to have all of our business done, and then wrap it up?
Sure, great.
So, would that be all right for Bree to send out a note, just saying at 7:30, we'll have light refreshments and a celebration?
Dale's retirement?
Yeah.
Terrific.
Very good.
Okay, so that'll be next week, then. All right, so, as long as, okay, so we'll hold those minutes for when we vote on minutes. All right, so, we were going to make a decision on the town administrator, but now we have a third company.
We thought there was a need to have a third. See, this is where Rich Bowen could help us.
This is interesting. We did discuss this at our meeting last Wednesday, is it's very clear from the Mass Municipal Association bulletin that came out, and they specifically said that procurement laws, laws apply, and checking into that, it certainly seems that way. Apparently, Collins has some sort of exemption, so theoretically, were we to hire them, we don't have to fulfill.
Right.
In the range we are, at $10,000 to $25,000, it really, it simply requires three quotes, and theoretically, taking the lowest bid for equivalent services.
So, in the meantime, though, I've contacted a third firm, and they're coming in next week.
Perfect, paradigm, right?
Yeah.
What time?
Well, I was going to say 7 o'clock, but...
Perfect.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, why don't we do 7?
Okay. They're out of Plymouth, too, so, and I, you've got a copy of the contract in here, not the contract, the proposal.
Well, they've actually been involved with Colony Planning Council and the aggregation.
Okay.
They're working with Colonial Power. So, we've had some workings with this group.
Well, it'd be good to hear them.
Previously, yeah.
And, yeah, the bio on that fellow is pretty impressive, actually.
Okay. All right, so, being that we are interviewing another group, we're not going to be making a decision on this tonight.
Okay, so you want them for 7 o'clock, then?
7 o'clock. So, 7, paradigm, and 7:30 Dale's.
Yeah, subject to a little flex.
Right, but that's what we'll plan.
Yeah.
I mean, it actually might be 7:45. I don't know if half an hour is going to be enough time.
I don't know either. Based on the other ones we have, it probably isn't.
Right. Well, do you want to just push Dale back to 7:45?
Yeah, I think so.
Because we don't want to rush.
Yeah.
These guys feel like they don't have enough time.
Right.
Okay, all right.
We don't have to get past my bedtime, are we?
I know, man. All right, so, one more interview, and then after that, we'll talk about setting a date to make a decision. Okay, so, summer hours begin...
Just, can we touch on the fire consultant?
Sure.
Because it's kind of got both going. Not, I went back to Matrix, because they had come in with this long proposal about how they were going to interview Halifax.
Right.
And I've talked to them, both by email and telephone, they're going to submit another proposal.
Perfect.
And MRI, Municipal Resources, who we're talking to on the town administrator, also had a telephone conversation with them, and they're submitting a proposal, too. So...
Perfect.
We'll have four proposals.
That's terrific, for fire.
And I, I look forward to hearing from MRI, because when we get to the reference checks, the glowing terms that came up with MRI, worth talking about some more.
Very nice. Okay, so, you're going to hold that until we talk about everything and make the decision?
At your discretion.
Okay, all right, why don't we do it, then?
I think that's wise.
Yeah, let's just talk about them all at once. All right, so, summer hours begin July 3rd, and then we'll be meeting every Monday following that, and possibly some other meetings along the way. We do have, Bylaw Review has asked for us on August 3rd to meet with them. It's a regularly scheduled meeting, and it's easier, I think, for the three of us to go to them than to ask that whole committee to come to us.
August 3rd.
August 3rd.
You talked to Alan.
Alan, yes.
I met with you two weeks ago, and we took back the 15th, didn't work for you, we took the 22nd, didn't work for them.
Do we have a time?
Alan came back and said he would...
Let me see, I don't know if I got a time...
It's okay.
From Alan, but it's, it's going to be August 3rd.
6:30, 7:00.
It's normally 6:30.
All right, well, we had, what, 7, to let you guys get a half an hour to get...
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay, so why don't we go 7 o'clock? So, Bree, can you post us for meeting with the Bylaw Review Committee on August 3rd at 7:00 PM? And we'll, where do you meet, usually, in here?
Next one down.
Okay, in the other meeting room?
Whoever's not here or there, but...
Okay.
Do you just want to put to 6:30, just in case you're in there with them and they wanna start right away? Like, I'll do the same time that they're starting their meeting? Because it's usually just Portis Leckman and, um, with Bylaw Review Committee.
All right, well, we could do that.
It's up to you, I mean, not unless you want to put the 7.
Do we wanna start early, skip the Monday meeting, have a, a business meeting Thursday, and then go on to bylaws?
Have a, have our regular meeting on, um, August 3rd instead of 7:31. Well, do you wanna see how things pan out?
Yeah.
So why don't you post it for 6:30, and then if we don't need, if we really don't need to meet, then we could, we could do that, and maybe then change it to 6.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, okay.
So I have Portis Leckman to meet with Bylaw on August 3rd at 6:30. Will you just do a regular Portis Leckman meeting?
I'm not sure yet.
Okay.
We're not sure.
We'll do, we'll, okay.
Okay, so we can hold off on posting that, just kind of keep it on the radar.
I'm just gonna count that out of the calendar.
Okay, perfect. Yeah, you don't wanna have to pull it down. All right, so CEC solar proposal, is that the one that we need to discuss?
What's that?
In, um, CEC solar proposal, that we need to discuss in executive session next week?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it may be, I, Dale is in negotiation, and we probably should be up to speed on the, on our negotiating position in case it's not done.
Okay.
We actually, John and I, stressed to Dale, if at all possible, to get that done. I mean, it's complicated stuff, and Dale probably has a better handle on it than anyone, and, um...
Okay.
There's a chance it'll all be straightened out by them, which would be exquisite.
Okay.
Marvelous.
All right, so do you wanna post a meeting for 5:30 next week?
Uh...
Do we need that much time, or you wanna go 5:45?
I think the solar should take, um, 15 minutes. Do we wanna meet with the zoning enforcement officer as well?
Why don't we do both of them at 5:30?
Okay, so do, maybe, or call 1:530 and 1:545?
Why don't we do zoning at, um...
5:30.
5:30, and then Dale at 5:45?
Yep.
Perfect.
All right, so, um, um, Bree, you'll be on top of that?
Executive session.
Yep, so you have to post us.
6:26 at 5:30.
Mm-hmm.
The 5:30 would be an ongoing legal matter, um, and 5:45 would be contract negotiation as, as reasons for executive session.
And who is this, who's the 5:30?
Uh, that would be Bob Carling.
Bob Carling.
And 5:45 would be Dale.
Should I call it solar, or just want me to put with Dale? Oh, that's contract negotiation.
Yeah, it's...
Solar contract negotiation.
Solar, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do I just call it contract, or should I put solar, Mark?
Uh... No, contract is fine.
Yeah, contract negotiations.
Yeah, I think it probably, those would be the word, the reason words, anyway.
Yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. The other one's ongoing litigation.
Yes.
Yep.
Perfect. Okay, so on to correspondence.
Uh-huh. Geez. Um, so, well, at the top of the pile, this is, uh, from Mega Massachusetts Education Governance Association renewing our, um, our, uh, workman's compensation. Actually, they're looking for a response already. Um, it's, uh, for $22,000. Yeah, you remember, is that the, similar to last year?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're, we're, we're good, we have a very good loss with them. It's a, it's terrific.
It does include...
We're not getting charged anymore.
Yeah, it does include a, um...
We're getting credit.
A premium discount of 5%, I think, because of probably...
Very nice.
...our good record. Um, so I'm, I'm willing to make a motion if we're okay on signing this.
Sure.
So I make a motion, we sign the, uh, Mega Workman's Comp renewal quotation page.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is this on your list, Bree?
Yes, but that had a depth...
No, it's perfect.
She put that in, and I said I'd present tonight.
One less thing.
Looks like it's, uh, just needs you.
Okay.
Mark, you made that motion?
Yes, seconded by John.
So while you're signing that, Comcast has sent us a letter letting us know that on July 13th, the Olympics Channel HD will be available on channel 782. Um, and August 1st, um, the self-installment kit will increase from $995 to $15. And on August 15th, the Sprout HD is amended to extended, uh, expanded basics and family tier. There are other words on there, but I think that's probably close enough. Um, a email from, uh, I guess, this is from Karen Foy, who's a member of the Cable Advisory Committee, wondering if I would be the liaison back to the board, and I am on the board of Area 58, and I would, I am glad to be the liaison between that board and here.
Great plan.
Uh, this is from FEMA Federal Emergency Management, uh, Association. Essentially, they are working on the digital flood insurance rate maps, and they are inviting us to a flood risk review meeting, either in Dartmouth on July 11th or in Kingston on July 11th. Um, uh, I think we have just a very small flood plain in the north part of town. I can...
It's something interesting to do.
Why wouldn't that be one of the other boards?
It is CC to everybody else, uh, Highway Building Inspector. Uh, I am, I, I didn't, I can probably attend that. I, I, I think it's extremely unlikely there'll be any issue. Actually, I can't attend that, so I'm...
Okay.
Okay, not, I think.
So Dale won't be because he'll be done.
Right.
Um, do you wanna see if Jim O'Keahy plans on attending, and if he can't, um...
If he can't, then I would take a look at it.
Okay. All right, do you wanna give that to...
There we go.
John, there you go.
Uh, this is a memo from the Friends of the Council on Aging. I, um, the title is Need Community Service Hours or Small Time Part Child, Part Small Time, uh, Small Time Work.
You give me a semi.
The Friends of the Council on Aging are looking for an individual to do yard work for seniors in Plimpton each month. They are paid through the Handy Person Program, funded by the Fens Group. Anyone interested can call E.V. Hannigan, 585-8612 for contact information. That sounds like an awesome opportunity and a, 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 a nice service to the...
It's been ongoing, so it's good.
Okay. Um, Selectman Weekly Warrants, Verizon, $378, EverSource, $1749, Belmont Springs, $12, local computer printer, $219. Um, The Express this week, it says at the Above the Fold headline, which firm will they hire, and we're still working on that. Um, there is a lovely spread on the Denit School Field Day. It looks like a whole bunch of constructive things went on. Um, this actually, uh, on the back page is Old Victorian Press Flower Art Display, um, which is at the public library. Um, I'll come back to that in a minute because I think that'll be my rave.
Okay.
So I'll come back to that.
Um, I think there was something in there, too, about an open house on the house across the street from the Historical Society?
That was, here it is, or, no, here it is, um, open house, thank you for, thank you, um, um, no, that's not that one. Um, so there is an open house at the, at the house across from...
The Wright House, I think is what they call it?
Yes, the Wright House.
The Wright House?
One to three.
Yep, um, and they did a beautiful job.
On Sunday.
Second or third project they worked on, and, uh, be fun to see, great thing, gonna be my other rave.
Okay.
Great thing that these old houses are being saved.
That is a great thing.
Do you know what address that is?
Um... Let's see, 192, so it's one up or one down from 192.
It's on Facebook, if you go onto Plimpton Helping Plimpton.
Very nice. Okay, so, um, any other business?
I'll come in.
I just make sure on agenda items, um...
We got everything?
Got everything.
Okay. All right, um, our next meeting is 6:26. We're gonna be starting at 5:30 in executive session, and we will plan to be an open session at 6, unless we run a little bit late. Then we go to 7:10, 7:17, 7:24, and 7:31. We will have a joint meeting with the Bylaw Review Committee on 8:03. The townhouse will be closed on July 4th. So we've got minutes from 6:05, 6:12, and 6:14. All I had was Colleen Thompson regarding her friend that teaches. I don't know if it's really her friend.
Yeah.
Or...
Acquaintance?
Acquaintance, regarding, or how about just regarding a class on grant writing?
Yeah, yeah.
And get rid of her friend?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, I, I had a couple things on 6:05.
Okay.
Very minor. Um, the fourth bullet point, the G on grant should be a small g.
Okay.
And then the next bullet point, um, the Selectman's office should have an apostrophe after the S.
Yes. Okay. Okay, all right. Anything else? Do you have anything, John?
No.
All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 5th as amended. Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. All right, now we're on 6:12.
I missed 6:12.
Yeah, I missed 6:12, too.
She sent those out this afternoon. Do you wanna hold those?
I haven't seen them.
All right, let's hold them.
And they're in your, in your, your copies of them.
Oh, because I didn't, there's some way here, then.
Yep, there they are, right there.
Is there a folder?
Okay.
I don't know, it's kept...
All right, so 6:14?
Uh, that was the, uh...
Your meeting with Dale.
Meeting with Dale.
Uh, I had no corrections.
I have no corrections, because since I wrote them.
Okay, all right, do you wanna make a, one of you make a motion?
I make a motion that, uh, minutes 6:14 be approved as presented.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain because I didn't attend the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll hold the minutes from 6:12. All right, um, do you wanna start with rants and raves, John?
Yep. Soon as I find my rant and rave, I was...
All right, while you're looking at all...
Oh, no, here.
All right, you got it? Okay.
So this is kind of a sad rave I wrote. A sad rave and a remembrance of Dick Reynolds. Dick was one of the old time as a gentleman. Uh, he was a lover of all things Plimpton. Dick was an Army veteran of the Korean Conflict. Uh, partly due to that, Dick's hearing declined in his later years, but that didn't stop him from speaking up at town meeting. And as I was moderator for some of those times, I knew I could depend on Dick to rise and say in a straightforward way, words to the effect, "I don't understand the logic of this." I only had to look out at the meeting floor to realize that at least half of the meeting was thinking the same thing, but didn't wanna stand up and say it. Dick was never afraid to confront what he considered dubious logic. Dick will be missed.
Very nice. Do you wanna go?
I will.
Actually, I'll go.
Okay.
All right, uh, I got a, um, email from Linda Letty that, um, reads, "Hello, Mass Bill, Mass House Bill, 3528 is a bill to put a five cent recycling fee on small liquor bottles known as NIPS, and, uh, that our yearly town cleanup is full of them. The bill sponsors hope that by putting a small return incentive fee into the purchase price, fewer would show up along the roadways. If you're interested, call, uh, Tom Coulter. Uh, you can, uh, let him know that, uh, you support this bill. His email is thomas.coulter@masshouse.gov, or you can call his office at 617-722-2460. And the bill's official name is Promoting Proper Disposal of Miniatures. So it'd be nice to get the NIPS off the road. I don't know if that would help. I mean, if people just didn't litter, that would be the ideal, but maybe this will be some incentive to either take them home and throw them out, or, you know, reduce the number on the roads."
Um, no rants, so I get two raves. All right, so first rave is, uh, back to the Old Victorian Press Flower Art Exhibit at the, um, at the library. Peggy Gillette does this, there's one paragraph in the paper this week, it's kinda cool. It says, "The purpose of this exhibit is to encourage others to try their hand at an old Victorian art other than paint and brush, an art that has many applications, and if you love gardening like myself, it will give you many hours of contemplation and enjoyment." So it's certain, a certain old time piece to that that I really appreciate, which leads right into one more comment about Dick Reynolds at the memorial service on Saturday at the church that had a lot of music in. There were a couple comments along the way, that Dick could not quite, he loved music so much, he couldn't quite restrain himself sometimes from clapping after the choir had sung a song, which apparently is a, a tacit no-no. Um, and so at the end of the service, the Hallelujah Song was sung, and it was very beautiful by the choir, and at the end, everyone uproariously clapped.
Oh, that's perfect, a tribute to Dick.
It was a great memorial, one of probably the best, actually.
Beautiful music and, uh, beautiful tribute to a beautiful guy.
Very nice.
So there.
All right, nothing about the house?
Next week.
The open house?
Oh, yeah, no, yeah, I mean, well, just...
But you already did two.
Yeah.
Okay.
Put a limit.
You can't hog all the, all the raves. All right, so, uh, unless we've got anything else, I think we'll call it a night. Okay, all right, I'll make a motion we adjourn?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, see you next week. Thank you.